Hey Brad, Michelle, can you guys hear me this time?
I hear you now.
I hear you really well.
Okay, good. I don't know. It happened last time too. The first time I log in, you can't hear me.
I sent you the phone information just in case.
Yeah, I have that. I wrote it down too. Don't know. Don't know what's going on. Okay, thanks guys.
Is that a new jacket, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah. Woo. Yeah, breathe the jacket out tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Looks sharp.
Donald, how are you?
Been great. How are you gentlemen?
Can't complain.
So Alan, did you have that suit made especially for you?
Uh, no, you know, I was going just shirt and tie when we were at home, but you know, some of the bigger meetings, you know, you gotta throw a coat on, you know?
Sorry, I didn't wear a suit tonight.
Yeah, usually your suit tied at all times. Yeah.
I know.
Yeah. Mary, how are you?
I'm doing well, Alan. How are you?
You know, I'm doing fantastic. Thanks for asking.
Good, good. Snowed all day.
Yeah.
Still at work. That's okay. So did you get to reopen for in-person today? Or did you never really stop?
You know, we stopped when the order was put in place, but we are opting to wait potentially. I said Monday, next Monday, but we might opt to have their Fat Tuesday because there's just, you know, my business is mostly takeout anyways, so, um, so yeah, I'm not, I'm not jumping at the bit to get back up in front side stuff. So get past Fast Two, Fat Tuesday, and then we'll see where we're at, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
It just amazes me how many people buy punchies. And that was like, I'm full-blooded Polish, and I, we never had them at our house. I don't know where they came from.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a tough thing to make for us, but we get through it every year somehow. So it's a, it's a, it's a lot, a lot of time and effort, hard work too, for sure, so. We get through it though.
What's the biggest seller for kinds?
Most popular kinds, obviously custard, cream, raspberry, and then it goes like the other fruits, like strawberry, blueberry, lemon. So it's about sixty, forty glazed to powder. So when it comes to, you know, because we give two options, so, but we made eighteen hundred and five dozen last year in three days, so. Yeah, not eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred dozen. It's crazy.
And you stopped production, normal donut production those days, right? I mean, you can't.
Yes. Yeah, we have a small production at both north and south, like a regular donuts, but not, and then we were writing the punchies on Monday, that Monday and Tuesday, so.
Do not disturb. Yes.
Hi lad.
How are we doing, Mr. Watson?
Well, thank you.
Good.
Hello, man.
Hello, Mary. You're a peanut butter fan too?
Dinner. Couple of scoops of peanut butter. Yep.
I just, I just got done with spaghetti.
Hmm. I made lasagna last night.
Lad, you get to go out to eat again, man. Are you feeling good? Or how are we feeling about this? Have we turned over a new leaf that we're gonna eat at home, or?
Um, well, first of all, I'm waiting until I get my second vaccine before I do anything.
Okay.
And that will hopefully be next Monday, and then I'll feel better about things. Debbie has not had any vaccines yet, though. But yeah, I'm feeling better about things. But we've, I mean, it's been a year, man. I mean, we've just gotten used to eating at home.
Oh, man.
So I don't see us going out to restaurants every night right away. In fact, I think everybody's gonna be slow to go back to their normal routines until maybe fall.
Ooh.
I do.
Easy, Prougee.
Yes. Well, the thing, I was just reading, thousands of doses of vaccine were spoiled on the way to Michigan. We've been really slow getting the vaccines out, and now you've got these new strains coming. So.
Who's doing that?
Every, all of the experts are saying double mask now.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I don't expect, I don't expect it to get real good anytime soon.
Well, it's five thirty. Greg, would you like to do your Zoom speech?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott, and I'd like to address a few things before the mayor recalls the roll call. This is the pre-meeting, which is formed for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting, and participants will be invited at that time to unmute and address the commission if they wish. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing, where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct our meeting free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut the meeting down if that happens. Thank you all for participating. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you to ask for a roll call.
And I just realized we are missing Commissioner Castleberry, I do believe, just. Is she, before I asked for the roll call, sorry that I started that. I don't see her here. So we have too much to do to hold up because there's a lot of people wanting to speak tonight, so we will go ahead with roll call.
Mary Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Present.
Mr. Gows.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry. Do you want to make a motion to excuse her, or just, since it's just a pre-meeting, not bother?
Yeah, usually we just wait till the, she's not here by the regular meeting.
Yeah. Pre-meeting usually we just move on.
Yeah. Thanks, Alan.
All right. Moving on, back to you, Greg. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So a few weeks ago, one of our community leaders, Mr. Berryman, came to me and had what I thought was a neat idea for how he might be able to help out the city as a special projects coordinator. And I know he's spoken to some of you individually, but I asked him to come to the night's pre-meeting and explain the concept that he has in mind, and take your temperature on that idea. And I see he is here tonight, and so I will turn it over to Jim Berryman at this point.
Thank you very much, Greg. And I know you have a big meeting, so I'll be uncommonly brief. I did, I did approach Greg with this idea. And it, it came after some conversations with some business leaders in the community that it, again, it's a special projects coordinator. Special projects would be projects that our city administrator would come up with. The commission would, would like me to take a look at. And I really want to preface this. I know that the DDA in Main Street is on, is on the agenda later. This isn't in no way in competition with that. This has nothing to do with that. I'm, I'm very pleased with how Dusty and DDA want to move forward with, with their Main Street program. This is, comes from years of experience, local government, in the Michigan Senate, and relationships that I've built and very happily able to maintain those relationships in Lansing and also in Washington DC. These would be, again, projects, and I have spoken to each of you, and I appreciate the time in doing that. I do have JB Berryman LLC, which is, is, this is not looking to be, I don't want to be a city employee, and this is not a city employee. This is a contract with, you know, a private LLC. The, the contract being, you know, you could accept this, and we may go through the whole year on, and Greg may give me a couple of special projects, and if I'm unable to complete those, there's, there's no, there's no commitment on the city's part whatsoever. I do, I do see a wide range of issues, everything from blight, abandoned buildings, and again, I'm, I'm looking at citywide, not just in revitalization in the downtown area. I spoke to each of you because the general public that's listening would understand this one probably more than any, and I just use this example because of that, is Jefferson School. And believe me, in my time, we, we talked about this when I was mayor back in the eighties. Jefferson School has been an issue for a long time. And because of all of the contamination that's there, we just haven't been able to make that happen. If, if the city, if Greg would want to give me that as one of the projects, and it was, I think Commissioner Watson brought up the idea of, you know, having a finite time on these projects, and I agree with that. Is, okay, if, see what you can do if, if you can accomplish what hasn't been able to be accomplished in a long time, is to get that building torn down and leveled. If, if I'm able to do that, if I'm able to bring the resources, either community resources, or I think probably to a great extent, probably EPA in Washington, to bring those funds, make those funds available, we're actually able to make that project happen. Then and only then would any compensation come, come my way by this contract, and it's, it's based on a flat hourly rate. An hourly rate that I would have to invoice the city. And if, if, I'll just real quick, quickly just read that portion of, of a very simple contract. This payment would be in full after completing one hundred percent of the scope of the work requested and agreed upon. If I'm unable to complete the project requested by the city, no compensation will be requested and/or provided. And I, no, I think that's important. I think that's what I would want to see, is it really is, you know, performance-based contract. If I'm unable to perform, then I will not, I will not be compensated. And again, that compensation would be on a, on an hourly rate per project. And any of these projects would not be contingent on the other, it's individual projects that Greg and/or the city would come up with. And I think in, in the interest of time of everyone else that wants to speak, I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
I don't have questions. I have some comments around it to see maybe to disperse some conversation amongst the crew. I guess, you know, I'm, I'm kind of in the air on this. And when Jim, you and I talked about this, I, I mean, I was, I shot straight with you on it. You know, I think this is a, this is, I want stuff to happen. I want things to happen, and they're not gonna happen without people attending to them and being focused on them. But, but I also, I also want it to be very purposeful, very planned, very finite is a word that comes to mind, and that's kind of how you talk tonight. You know, what I, what I don't want is, you know, the, the idea that you're, you're a consultant or Greg, and not a role in City Hall is important to me. In, in your role as, as, as addressing some of these, these big problems. So that's just my initial thought in, in how I think that it could be a success, but I'm not saying that we should run with this right now. And, and really, you know, I go back to Administrator Elliott, is, is this something that can just be taken care of at the administrative level rather than be commission business in general?
I think it would be appropriate for you to approve the contract. I mean, we don't know what the amount of the ultimate spend would be. You know, but theoretically, it could be beyond my budgetary authority. If the project came about, it took an awful lot of work. You know, I, in, in general, I try to bring contracts to you if they have any potential of exceeding ten thousand dollars.
If I could jump in, in, Greg, that in our conversations, I, I'm not looking for, I am retired, you know, I'm not looking for a full-time job. I am not, I'm like all of you that are on the commission and in, in city government. I love this city, and there are some small projects that are out there that we just haven't been able to get past the goal line and finish them. If I can, if I can use my context that I've developed throughout the city, but in Lansing and in Washington, and help make those happen. I really don't see this as, as a large dollar amount. I, I look at trying to jump in, and like you said, Commissioner Watson, you want to see things get done. That's what I like to see happen too, is that this is, the administrator would give me a project, I would jump on that as quickly as I could, and I would be able to, I'd be able to find out fairly quickly, am I gonna be able to pull this together and, and, or not? And then get back to Greg and just say, listen, you know, even within the first, yeah, first few hours here of discussions with, with the parties involved, I, I don't believe that I am gonna have the ability to do that. And that would end, and there would be nothing between the city and nothing between my LLC in, in the city. It's, it's, again, if, if, if a project is brought to me, and I could see that things are moving forward, I would have that conversation with Greg and keep him updated and say, and again, we'll use the Jefferson, and that's a bigger problem. But let's just use, stick with Jefferson School for a minute. We're gonna work with EPA, you know, that, that's a, that's a longer timetable. He, I may be able to find out fairly quickly from my contacts in Washington and EPA, is this something that they're gonna be interested in? Is it something that's, you know, that's a year off? That, that type of thing, then I would, I'd go back with Greg and say, you know, this is where we are. Again, my role, I don't think is, in the long run, is something that he's looking for. But if it's something, we get a different vibe, which we had, I bring that up, an example up for a reason, because we were able to do, to do that with the property across from the old Antiva plant that on Caesar Street, where we found that there was contamination, and we're able to get with EPA. And EPA came in, in a very, very short time, and cleaned it up and paid one hundred percent for that cleanup. So there, if you hit it just right, we're able to accomplish. If, if not, then I think, and you're right, then you have to scale back and say, in this particular project, I, I don't see it happening in the short run, and that would end that.
And Commissioner Watson alluded to what I was going to ask. I mean, it's along that same line. I just, my only concern with this, and I know I've had conversations with you as well, Jim, but my, my concern is just, I really, I'm big on having like a finite number. Like, I would be afraid if this project could get, like, is it worth it if it gets to a certain amount? Was that project really worth that amount? Like, because it could really start adding up? And is this something where you might have an estimate ahead of time? So I guess that's the question I'm asking, like, an estimate ahead of time of what we'd be looking at if you were to accomplish that project?
Well, it's, it's an excellent question, and, and probably using Jefferson School, then it's the greatest example, because, I mean, if you do. Because I, I mean, if you do work with the federal government, that, that can be, it can be a longer time, but number of hours involved with, with actually having conversations or meetings with Washington. Hours-wise would be, would be fairly short. It may be over a longer period of time. This isn't over, in, in, in those are the details, you're right, that you have to work out in the contract. That you'd say, if Greg would say, I, I'm going to limit this to, to 20 hours. That's the amount of time that you put in. When you get there, you're either moving forward. If you're moving forward, you can look at it and say, okay, we're actually going to accomplish that. Let's continue. If, you know, if we're not, we're done. Then again, if it hasn't been accomplished, then, then there's no invoicing done anyway. So, but I, I agree, that's, it's an excellent point. I, I think limits like that, and again, it's awfully difficult to say because I don't know what other projects Greg could be interested in, in me doing. But I'm certainly open for, you know, again, this is not, am I looking for something to do? Yes, I, I'm retired. I, I think I, I do think the context that I've made over, over my career can be helpful. This really isn't a, you know, this is not a, an income project for me. This, this is, I, I think that we can have the ability to bring some people together in maybe complete some of these jobs that just haven't been done yet. Any others?
I'll jump in here and I'll say that I think that the contacts and that Mr. Berryman has built over time, whether in Lansing or in the city, could benefit Greg and, and the city of Adrian. We know that he's done negotiating with the MEA. We also know that he loves this kind of work. And I feel like he could be an asset to Greg moving forward. And I think it's worth continuing the conversation and entering into some kind of an agreement over a short period of time, maybe a six-month trial to see how it's working out for both Mr. Berryman and Greg.
Commissioner, I would certainly agree with you that the contract does, does have an suggestion, and it was a draft, has a starting date and an ending date. I, and I do think, you know, something, whether it's six months or nine months, or even the end of the year, just, it's not opening and just say, okay, is it working? So if this would happen to go through, Greg, I'd appreciate a couple of easy projects at the beginning. Yeah, yeah. See if we can get something done.
Greg, you've worked with cities a long time. Have you seen of other project coordinators like this that are on a contracted basis? Or is this really thinking outside the box?
Well, I think it's, is thinking outside the box. And, and I think it may have been Commissioner Watson that mentioned it. The, the term consultant, you know, and in, when I was on the commission, yet, and the general public a lot of time, and I don't want to offend any consultants, but consulting just sounds, it has, has a bad connotation. It, it's like outside, you know, advice coming in and, and not necessarily anything happening. Someone's coming in, being a consultant and saying, I think you ought to do X, Y, and Z. And then, you know, and then leaves town. This was something that, and before I, before I went to Greg, had these conversations again with some community members. And they were very much in, in favor of, they'd like to pay for, for our performance. It's, this is not a city employee. There isn't any, any taxes or benefits on the city. This would be strictly an hourly rate to me. But again, it's like a real, you don't make any money unless you sell the house. You know, whatever the project is, if, if my, if job isn't completed, then there's no invoice. But I do like, I do like the mayor's comment about having a, a, maybe a, a number of hours project that you would work, that I would work on that and find out, okay, where are we at the end of 10 hours?
Yeah. So as a former consultant.
Sorry about that, Greg.
Yeah, there, there is some truth to that. I mean, consultants tend to want to work for their hourly fee. And the, the pay for performance, you know, is more often than not, not a tangible result. You know, more often you get paid for a study or this or that. And as I say, I did think this was a neat idea in part because it, it is just that. It's paid for performance. And, you know, also the resources that Jim brings to bear in pursuing these, these projects would be a unique resource, it seems to me. You know, so I said, I do think it's out of the box kind of thinking.
Thank you very much, Greg. I appreciate it. Well, this, again, is, is a pre-meeting and I know you have a lot on your agenda. So it, Greg, I would certainly make myself available to you. And if commissioners have any questions, I would certainly be able, happy to answer them. But I'll wait to hear from, from you, Greg, and, and any additional information you need from me. You know, more than happy to sit down either by Zoom or when there's only two people, maybe still, still have the possibility of meeting in person and working through any of those questions. Thank you. Commissioner, I appreciate the time.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. I'll try to move this forward some in terms of more concrete proposal that addresses some of the things that you talked about tonight. And let's see if we can bring it back at a, at a, at a future meeting. There's nothing else on that. Our second item is a presentation regarding the potential for our DDA joining Main Street program, which they've been pursuing, as you know, for some time now. And some of the things that may be required in order to do that, most particularly a director, a Main Street director, and Dusty Steele is here tonight to speak on that subject. Perhaps with some others, it looks like.
Thank you, Greg. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Excellent. And do you see my screen, the city of Adrian, downtown Adrian?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I also want to thank you greatly for your partnership with the DDA and how much you guys have supported us in our endeavors, especially over the last couple of years as we move closer and closer to the desire of being in the Main Street Select Program. We, we recognize how much you guys have supported us, whether it was the blue line on the Dara District, which was almost unasked for, just came out and just was beautiful. To this, you know, the decorations of being able to accept the fact, placing some of the pots to watering and all the extra maintenance that came with that. To really letting Jason work on the trees and making us a Maple City in downtown. To parking lot signage and for the Comstock Christmas commitment that you do for the trees and the like, a number of our activities. We really realize how much you give us when it comes to the First Fridays, which would normally be under the umbrella you've given us, Michelle, and, and that committee has done such great work on the First Friday. So I want to thank you and I want to recognize our partnership that we have with you. Today, we have a great team. It's changed over quite a bit. If you can remember two or three years ago, here you can see some great names and some people that really have committed to doing, taking a hands-on approach. Because Main Street's not one of those where you have a governing board that tells everybody what to do in hopes that it works out. It's one where we actually have to get our hands dirty. We have to actually work a lot as, as board members. And I still expect that time, as time passes, that amount of expectation on all of us will continue to make the board grow, if you will. What is the Main Street Program's objective of the Main Street Program is support and improve Michigan downtowns. And I've got you guys all in front of the rest of that. So, and traditional commercial neighborhood districts, Michigan Main Street employs the Main Street approach. Community-driven comprehensive strategy encourages economic development through historic preservation. So what we're looking for is their technical assistance and helping us really build partnerships, collaborate amongst stakeholders and a number of things, as you'll see. Some good work's been done by the DDA as of recent. This is our new logo that we were developing. Oops, I must move backwards. Let me go backwards one, push the button. This is our new logo. You can see down here. And this is our mission statement now. We are Adrian Downtown Development Authority is a group of passionate volunteers dedicated to enhancing, preserving and promoting our rich history and vibrant arts and culture through meaningful partnerships with residents, business owners and stakeholders in downtown. We've also, and I don't know if this is going to share, so I will do my best to make this share. Michelle's done great work along with our, our great member Emily Rebar to help develop our downtown website. It shows a ma- boundary map. It talks a lot about what's been happening. We have the story map that we developed and strategic planning. So we've come a long way as we've worked towards becoming a cohesive group that's have very impactful to our downtown. As I look back to my report here, the approach that they use as a four-step process, economic vitality, design, organization, and promotion. So if you look at economic vitality for a moment, they are looking at analyzing market forces, providing balanced commercial mix, supporting expanding existing businesses and the like. You guys have seen this from me before. I'm here to say that we are ready. We are ready. We've studied it hard. We've been really transforming our agendas into it and really trying to create this, this type of structure to our group. But that comes with the select group, select level. So as we move forward, they'll help us do that. What are the benefits? And they include protecting and strengthening our existing tax base, creating positive community image, creating visual appealing and economic viable downtown buildings, attracting new business, creating new jobs, increasing investment in our downtown, preserving historic architectural resources and tailoring our specific community needs. Recently, Governor Whitmer, in her COVID relief plan, as part of the governor's plan, she is providing 225 million to three programs in the MEDC, one of which is the Michigan Main Street Initiative. She's made comment toward it and we can feel, and I feel that she is going to be a supporter of this initiative at, at state level. Recently, they opened up this part of the Main Street website. I just wanted you to see it because it's pretty interesting. Again, share and share this. This is something that they put up recently, reopen Main Street. And it's tailored into the, into the studies and the delivery of training from our Main Street of Michigan. And it's for business, established business, restaurant, service business, arts and culture, community organization design and promotion. So they're really coming after it. They really want to use the resources that they have to address these issues during this tough time. And we've all know that with our restaurant owners. Back to the presentation, if I can make it work. There it is. All right. So the impact that they had in the 1819, there was over 19.4 million in, in private investment. There was 10.3 million coming from public investment, 109 new businesses, 100 facade improvement programs. You know, we used to have that program and really like to get that back into play. And the most impressive thing is they're coming to town. They'd like to teach us how to really get volunteers and really employ and get them out in force and really bring our citizens to the downtown to focus. Some of the cities are actually, there are 18 cities in the state of Michigan that do this right now. Susie Marie, Boeing City, I will point out, the Blissfield is one of the masters on this and they've done a good job down there. But Mylan has done great. Celine has done great. And, and when I look at how they won the, the, the award for the best Michigan Main Street, and this year I think it's Boeing City has won it. And so there has been a, a nice commitment. Mark Murray's with me tonight. I know he's called a bunch of those directors that are out there using those Main Streets. Mark, can you give them a little insight about how that's working?
Yeah, thanks, Dusty. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
All right. Well, you know, Dusty brought this up to the DDA board a while back. And I was pretty skeptical despite Dusty's enthusiasm. And so I, I took it upon myself to try to understand how our community will be better off with this program. If we're going to make this kind of commitment to it, how, how will it benefit all of us together? So in the process, I either visited in person or have contacted and spoken with the directors of Owasso, Howell, Boeing City, Mylan, Celine, Blissfield, Tecumseh. And I come away with that absolutely committed that this is the best opportunity for Adrian, Michigan. I believe that the downtown of Adrian, Michigan is the core of the runaway apple. And as we all know, that that apple has been rotten in the past. And in the past five or eight years, we've seen phenomenal improvement in what's happened in the downtown. Now, the commissioners have to be skeptical. You're the stewards of our community's finances. And you'd have a lot of reasons to ask a lot of questions and we hope you will. And we will do our best to answer them to your satisfaction. I, I would say that these communities all have a couple of things in common. They either have a full or a part-time dedicated Main Street director. They have a very strong and active volunteer board for Main Street. And they all have a very strong connection, partnership to the city that they're in. Tecumseh doesn't have a Main Street program, but they have all of those criteria. They have worked together very well for a long time. And many of us can see the fruits of that effort to work together. They also put enough resources into that program that they can expect the benefits that they've received. Some of those benefits will include enhanced business attraction. We can get, we need more of our downtown with active businesses. Enhanced event promotion with the small resources that we have available. We can't put the kind of effort into the event promotions despite the fact that Michelle and others have done a wonderful, wonderful job so far that these other programs have much more. They have farmers markets, they have significant other programs that are operated that make money for the city and the DDA, excuse me, the Main Street. And they're, you know, they're run by a full-time director. These programs are nationally accredited. As Dusty said, they collect the, the benefits of that through grant funding from MEDC and federal funding that we don't have access to. And frankly, as Jim Berryman mentioned, it takes a person dedicated to be able to know those programs, to be able to get that grant funding in. We've talked to other of these directors and they've gotten a lot of money from the government that we don't have access to, either because we don't know about the programs or we don't meet the criteria. Once we're set up in the Main Street program, we will be accredited and able to garner these funds. There are a lot of benefits to this. I really want to let the commissioners know that I believe that this is a, a very good investment for the community to make into our, our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So currently we're in the engaged level. We've been in it for three years. As you know, I went up to Lansing with a group of us and we went up and learned a lot the first time around. We learned, and we sat in a room of 25 leaders from throughout the state and we, we made our first attempt at it. And, and while we didn't get it that time, we certainly did learn what we were supposed to be doing at this, as, as we moved down this line. So, you know, we have, have really been working on fund development plans. We have brochures set up now for giving. We have been working on it towards our websites and a number of other ways to help and find volunteers and to find ways to give to this endeavor. The select level is what we're wanting to achieve. This is where they come train our boards and our committees. We, they help us hire full-time Main Street director. They help us recruit volunteers and they help us get the program up and running. The select level requires a five-year commitment from the participating communities. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to our, our finance guy, Brad Maggard, who really is going to dive into our budget and give you a sort of a feel of what we've, what we've seen over the last few years and where we stand today. So Brad?
Yeah, thanks for having us, guys. Hopefully you can hear me. Everything good?
I can.
Okay, cool. So yeah, our budget annual this year is about $136,000. And that comes from That comes from the two-mill property tax along with a TIF. And there's also refuse collection from all the downtown businesses that gets funneled through our budget as well and a little bit of miscellaneous income. Now, you might think, wow, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, they should be self-sustaining and everything's great, right? So. Well, once you dive into it a bit there, go ahead, Dusty. You immediately will realize that sixty thousand dollars of our annual budget is going to parking lot maintenance and. We totally understand that we have to have great parking lots and I'll be honest, they look great and we're happy that they're there. But that does leave us with less money, right? And so go ahead, Dusty, do it again. The refuse collection that comes into our budget, of course, gets paid right back out to. All those trucks running around emptying dumpsters. And so. That pops out of there and then we're left with a little bit less money and then go ahead, Dusty, one more time. So we also have a few things, the sculpture budget that comes in and then goes out. And we are, we're charged a little bit of money for the city for auditing and things like that. And so when it really boils down to it. About ninety-one thousand dollars of our annual budget is really not something that is underneath our control as a DDA. And so. We kind of have this forty-four thousand dollars that we get to work with every year. And so. Yeah, you can go ahead, Dusty. What have we been? Doing with it? Well. We've definitely been doing some small DDA projects like DARA. We have dedicated some support to some, you know, projects that aren't being run by the DDA initially, like Adrian for the seasons. But really in the past three years, what we've been doing since I became treasurer was we've been balancing our, our budget and honestly, we have really been putting up some big surplus numbers. We've basically been very, very. Conservative with our funds. And so in the past three years, you know, by this June, we're looking at around a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of cash reserves. In the bank and we are really planning for a future as a Michigan Main Street and part of that is. That director that we desperately need. So go ahead, Dusty. So there's some very interesting things. Once we get that person and then we are all trained. They can do these things like coordinate all of our fundraising. They can do asks. They can. Create a lot of revenue for us there. They'll also expand. Our current events that we have downtown like Blues and Brews will be underneath the DDA very soon. And hopefully we can add several more events through the year. And those will all be revenue generating events for the DDA. And to be honest, it just straight up makes the city better, right? And so. We also would love to put together, you know, event merchandising and maybe even an Adrian branded merchandise. Merchandising that could be handled through this position. And of course, when we make our downtown better, our real estate values are going to go up, which should add to our, our DDA revenues as well. And so eventually we're hoping that this position would completely support itself through fundraising efforts. It might take a couple of years to do so. But I am very confident that that is more than likely would be the case. So we are really to the point where we are willing to put forth a, a, a large chunk of our budget. That, you know, little bit of remaining surplus that we've had to this person and. I think it'd be fantastic if we could, you know, get, get the city to, to chip in as well. So. You can keep going there, Dusty. Make your next slide, actually.
I am, and I just want to reiterate, you know, some of the Main Street work that's done with their. Main Street boards and throughout their communities and volunteers is to rally around some major project that takes place in our downtown. We haven't even thought of it yet, but it's coming our way. I know it is. We'll find something that we can rally on. Whether it be an old building that we want to white box and try to get it back into play. Or creating a, a, a fun space or a, a great space for downtown for people to join together. But I do think that as we're trained, as we're, as we're plugged into that system of two thousand cities across the United States. We're going to be accessed to so much information, get that director trained in that level and get them focused on bringing ideas to us. We also want a concierge for those business owners and those developers that are coming to town that has a great knowledge of our downtown, our downtown inventory. Our understanding where development can take place and truly, you know, be accessible to those, those, those people. And our downtown business owners and our downtown business owners and talking and communicating with them and sharing with them. You know, as I've said in this chairman role without a DDA director, a lot of that pressure sometimes leans towards us and, and I know we're not doing effective job. We're not. We're doing great at trying to build the foundation for something that can be effective and can be responsive and active. But I think we need your help on this one. We really want to have a partnership with you. We're asking today that you make a, let me step back for just a moment, not today. Because the application was due February fourth. And because of COVID, they decided to extend that application for Main Street select all the way to July, July thirty-first. So one of the things that we, they want to see as a level is that the city has committed at least on a five-year basis to this select level. Program and that there's some sort of revenue sharing of some sort with the DDA or the Main Street Board that shows that commitment. It'd be thirty-five thousand dollars. I'm going to go back to the budget here with Brad in just a moment, but I want to, I want to be clear on this. We believe that having that director will eventually create enough surpluses that will have tremendous impact on our downtown more than we've ever seen before. Having that person is totally focused on the downtown and, and not drifting away to outside downtown activities. From economic development standpoint and having a tremendous relationship with the employee that you're, you're looking to hire. That's Community Development Director. And Greg and the commissioners so that they know they have a great player in downtown that's really focusing on the needs of the downtown. So with that, I'll move to what the total budget is, Brad. You sort of give them a feel here.
Yeah, sure. So what we're hoping for is, you know, about a year in with this person, we're, we're really anticipating that our. Budget might look something more like this, where we have maybe a two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar annual budget as opposed to a hundred and thirty-six thousand. And of course, obviously the city is part of that. We are part of that with our, you know, our two mills that are available there. We're still planning on paying for those parking lots, so. Keep doing that. And of course, we're, we're anticipating this extra. Revenue coming in from fundraising and events. And you might look at that and you say, how on earth is a person going to come in and raise fifty thousand dollars? It's actually surprisingly easy and I think our, I think our citizens are ready to support this. And I think that that is very much proven through the success of Adrian for the seasons and how much money. That they were able to raise for decorations for our downtown. And I feel like we're going to see some major commitments from a lot of people.
So I go back to the, the team, you know, we have people in fund development on that team, as you can see. I was one, I was coming out and saying, maybe we can raise thirty, thirty-five thousand. They were going, are you kidding me? We can get fifty easy. I know we can. And I have a team of fundraisers that I think will bring together to really go out and get that broad-based community support. We have a nice, we have great committee work going on now. And we're compiling names of not only the stakeholders, but of all people in the of, of our city. If they want to give ten dollars, if they want to give twenty dollars, we're finding an apparatus that makes it easy for them on our website. And we really want to show by July that we have a broad-based community support. With that, it does give you guys some safety and comfort if I said it in this sort of fashion. By the time we get to budgeting here, which is coming up real quick, and you guys get to budgeting, I should say. And by the time we get into early spring, late spring. You will have probably seen from us by then enough pledge forms and enough activity from us to show that we're going, coming on strong from our side. That we're actually making that commitment. And so it is sort of a contingent thing that we have to pull this off. We will go in stronger with application at the select level. With a person in place. They, we also get ahead of the game as I talked to Lee Young, who's our contact up there. She says that having a person in place and getting them settled in and they would help and assist us get that settled in will put us at the beginning, you know, at the, ahead of the game when we finally get kicked off. And engaged by July thirty-first. The reason they, they delayed the deadline is they didn't think they could deliver. They figured with COVID and the like, they want a lot of onsite business. They want to come here and show us and use all their tools with us. And they said it just, we couldn't make that commitment. So we're going to move it to July thirty-first, but. We really wanted to get ahead of your guys' budgeting sessions in hopes that we could be a part of that. With that said. This is a lot of oops busyness here, but I wanted to bring it to, to. A particular point. So, so often when we get into hiring employees, one of the difficult things to do is to have a great job description. And hold that person accountable to that job description with measurables and performance measurements. We're committed as, as, as a DDA, as a Main Street. To a number of different things that we'll expect of that employee. That employee is to directly report to the DDA as it's structured, or it is the Main Street, it'll be Main Street DDA. They just, this were the body that they use to get through that. And, and, and they'll have annual views and quarterly reviews and we'll stay on top of the employee. Those and those reviews would then be shared with the Community Development Director and Greg and then eventually to the. To the, to the commission so that you can see where we're at on our measurement performance. So. We have a number of things that we expect of this person and we compiled this from a number. Of different job descriptions from the various cities that are doing it in the state of Michigan. We also reached out and got a, a, a report on the various pay levels that these individuals are receiving throughout the state. And we can go as far as we can go to Celine and we can go over to Mylan, we can get over. And we're seeing that that range is going to be somewhere between fifty to sixty thousand dollars to get that person plus benefits. So I don't want to stop there. So we've, we've talked about it. You know, one of the things that we concern ourselves as a DDA is if it was an employee of the city. Where does that reporting and ultimate responsibility and accountability land? Does it get gray? We want to be careful of that. We really want to be careful of that. Is it a person that has to report directly to a city? A staffer does it report to the Main Street and. The way the structure of Main Street is to report directly to us. So there'd have to be some trust in our partnership that we would implement this employee and make sure they're doing exactly what they're doing. With that said. I want to thank each of you and open it up for questions.
Dusty, I have a couple of questions. So clarify for me, you're asking the city for thirty-five thousand dollars. That thirty-five thousand dollars is going towards the director's salary or that is going into your pot?
It would be going into the general budget of the DDA, sort of like an investment that you're committed to. From a city standpoint, that you're putting money into it, knowing that we're going to take care of business on your behalf as it relates to the downtown. So it wouldn't be just for that employee, I guess, but we would, you know, it, it supports the whole endeavor.
Okay, so I guess I'm a little. Sketchy then as far as is this a. Is this director going to be a city employee and the city is going to? Be providing benefits or is this a, a person that just strictly works for? Main Street.
Well, that it's a great question because it's, you know, I even asked Greg the other day, we're doing a tour of the trail. And I said, I don't want this to be a bone of contention with the commission. What I want to be able to do is work this out in, in the best way, fashion possible. So if he was a city employee, is there a way to safeguard that they certainly are responsible to us as a DDA and that that is absolute so that there is no. Mission drift, if you will, of that employee. Or, and so that they can have the benefits that the city provides. But we've also looked at other directors and we've also looked at other employment benefits packages. And it is, it is, we are able to put together a. A benefits package that's similar to the city and buy it direct. But it's, it's again, when you guys get in discussion, if you find that is important to have it one way or the other, we don't want it to be a breaking point on this decision.
I guess I'm just, I'm wondering who does this person report to your board or to Greg?
It would report to our board.
Okay.
Clearly.
Okay.
And we would perform the performance evaluations and provide all of you constant data and information.
And we are providing office space.
We would like to house them in the armory.
Okay.
And so you would not have to provide our office space. Thanks to Mark and his generous behavior.
Lad, if I could add. I, I think we should be thinking about how much of a partnership that these other communities have developed with the Main Street Director. And, and they seem to be very integrated in terms of the communication and the priorities. And the typically the director does report to the. Main Street program, but, but when we're working together as a team, all of us, the city. Leadership, the city staff, the Main Street leadership, the community's leadership, when we're on the same team. That, that shouldn't, it isn't a question that these other folks have, have to deal with. It, it's a resolved by that. Level of professional partnership that exists between these communities.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're, what you're saying. It's just sort of a, it's a little bit of a different concept. Than what we have right now. So it's, it's something different.
Yeah, we're, we're replicating what they've asked us to, to present in a way, in a way, because they, they all are very similar. They actually named the chairperson is the person that performs the evaluation. I would have a team that did that actually. Because I want it done right. I want to make sure that we're all being able to speak freely to this person and that they're, that they're growing with us.
I think it's important to, to know, we're, we're only part of the investment. We've commit, we would commit to five years if we were to move forward with it. But also in year six, if we don't find that the Main Street's doing their job adequately, we stop funding. And so it, it, I don't think that, that control over the individual is as important. As, you know, if they think they're doing great and go out and raise another thirty-five, Dusty, and then you can continue them on. We're, we're a piece of the support for this individual.
That's correct.
Right?
That is correct. That is correct. And I, and I would even go to say, we all, we all talk a lot. We all communicate with each other. If we knew something was going astray on that, we'd take corrective measures. Or we'd end the program and even if it was before five years. I just want to, I want to be positive about it. I want to believe in it because it's real and it's worked. And I'm willing to devote my time and effort toward it. And I think all of the people that are here from the DDA and the DDA itself is committed to the same endeavor.
I sure appreciate the, the enthusiasm that Dusty and Mark and Brad have brought to this meeting. It's obvious you've done a lot of work.
It's been a few years of building up to this and the, and I, and like I said before, we're ready. We're ready. I said before in previous meetings when I've given you update, I said, I'm not ready to, to ask yet, but. We are now ready.
So what was the, what was the tipping point then? What was, what happened where you said, okay, now we're ready?
We changed board members, most of, you know, I would say a seventy percent turnover, seventy, seventy-five percent. I'm not saying anything bad about those employees or those, those great volunteers, but. The, the, the energy that started to develop and the synergy between our board members and the commitment and understanding of what the Main Street process was going to bring to us. We became sold as a group and, and we do have players like Drake here that you see online, Drake Vally, you know how committed he is to making things happen. And Emily and, and Margaret and Brad's been great and Dave Thomas has been a, a beast of getting things done. So. You know, we really have a synergy that's going on right now.
So kind of piggybacking, Dusty, you're pretty much saying when I met with you about this, you said that your board will be more active. So a lot of times, you know, in the past, some DDA members, you know, weren't so out there when it comes to like, say example, like decorating downtown and stuff like that. So this program will. Well, you want some board members that are going to be very active and, and out there and donate their time. So you want people that are, that have a lot of energy like three of you here tonight. So. I think it's a, it's a positive thing. I think that like Mark said, we're all on the same team. So control, I'm confident with the leadership of the DDA that I'm not so concerned with control. Kind of like Commissioner Watson, I, I like to see results too. When, you know, when we're putting money in the, we're putting skin in the game. What's, what's, what's the city's return on that? And, and we're on the same team, but you know. We want to see results. So I think that I'm confident with the leadership of the DDA that that individual you guys hired will be a go-getter, will be a, a individual that will be out in the front and. And I think that being on the same team and getting positive results is good as a win-win for everybody. So.
And I will say this, that this person will have a stringent interview process and then we'll go through a lot of them, but I want to share that person with so many of you to make sure that we're all making the right decision. So there'll be a number of, I'll call upon to, as we get down to our final candidates as we go forward. That I'd want everybody to see, to see if they have what it takes.
Thank you all for hearing this out. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that this evening, hopefully we can bring something concrete back to you at a future. Meeting. The third item on our pre-meeting agenda tonight is the Police Department's annual. Report and some discussion related to the same. And I believe. Chief Emrick is here and has a. report, uh, and some discussion related to the same. And I believe Chief Emrick is here and has a a PowerPoint, uh, perhaps to share with you.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Administrator. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the time. I know you have a very busy meeting ahead. I will try to keep it brief. Uh, this is my first annual report as chief. It's part of our accreditation process. Uh, it was quite an undertaking. Uh, hopefully you've all had a copy of it, had a chance to look at it. It's a hundred and twenty pages. Um, I've tried to compress it down to about a dozen slides to keep it succinct, but, uh, please, if there are any questions, uh, stop me at any point, feel free to, uh, reach out and I can, uh, do my best to answer them. I will, uh, activate my screen here. Okay. I would, uh, like to thank Commissioner Strayer for the photograph here on our very first slide and also a couple of photos within the report itself.
Chief?
Yes.
We can't see your screen.
Yeah, get that wonderful photograph up there, Vince.
Is it the one of you on the bike? Oh, Chief, we can't hear you now either. Okay, we can see your screen. Still can't hear you. Slides are up.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, fantastic. Sorry about that. Not sure what the issue was there. Okay, so this, uh, photo of our building was, uh, provided by Commissioner Strayer. The, uh, first pages are introductory pages, one through ten. They are our vision, our mission statement and core values. Uh, there is a dedication to our fallen officers, uh, Dennis Lyons and Bobby Williams. Uh, page seven and eight, very important program pages. I wanted to make a distinction on, uh, page seven is our introductory letter to the accreditation process. Uh, as you know, we are one year into a two-year application. Uh, so I look forward to, um, completing that process at the end of this year and reporting back to you. Page eight is our compliance with the Presidential Executive Order on Safe Policing for Safe Communities. Uh, essentially, the Department of Justice reached out to our accrediting body, the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. And they wanted Michigan agencies to submit, uh, use of force policies for review and certification. Uh, they were looking for a few criteria and for us, uh, we met it right away. And the reason for that, uh, as you know, we had a number of demonstrations throughout the year. We were able to meet with some of the organizers and various groups. Uh, we met with the NAACP, we met with Black Lives Matter of Lenawey. And some of the changes that they had suggested, changes that we made were the very changes that were part of the executive order. Um, so when that came down, we sent it in, we were, uh, certified almost right away. So that, uh, that was work that was already done. That was, uh, uh, a benefit from the community. So thank you for that. Um, those of you that are listening. Uh, page six is our organizational chart. And I apologize, we did run into some formatting errors with some of this. We were trying to compress a lot of information into single pages. Um, and what I would offer here, you know, we were trying to show the chain of command without specific names or ranks. But all of that is listed on our website. Uh, we have a contact page on our website with everyone's rank name, uh, phone extension, email. So if ever anyone needs to get in touch with anyone, it's listed there for the community. Pages eleven and twelve are cases of interest. Um, essentially that is the collection of our press releases throughout the year. Um, unfortunately, we had a lot of events last year that we wound up doing press releases on. Uh, the only thing I would get into at this point is just to note, uh, that they start in June. You know, generally when the weather starts to warm up, that's when, uh, things become more active for us. And, uh, last year was no exception. Uh, so they started about June first and I think they picked up speed as the year went on. So a major part of this report is statistical information and that comprises page thirteen through fifty-six. It's a lot to take in. Um, our reporting system, Clemis, has some very robust tools. Um, very useful reports that can be run. Uh, so we are trying to take full advantage of that. The bulk of those stats are formed into quarterly reports, which are then compiled at the end of the year and used for annual review. Uh, the statistics include the types of calls, arrest statistics, of course, use of force. Um, and as I said, all file classes are used, which makes the font quite small. So I'm, I'm speaking specifically to those pie charts when we get into the month-to-month comparison. Um, every crime is listed on there and it, it makes it such that you have a hard time reading it. So what I tried to do was, uh, put together an annual comparison at the end. I used a, um, year-to-date stat report for the month of December from nineteen and twenty. So I touched on that on the last slide here. The tail of the tape, so to speak, calls for service were down for the fifth straight year. Um, that is due in large part to measures we put in place for the pandemic. Um, a call for service is issued, uh, initiated by a citizen. It can be initiated by an officer. And I think the decrease that you see here is the officer-based calls. Uh, we really reined in when it, when we would make a traffic stop, we really were, uh, choosing on when we would contact someone in the public. We didn't want to, um, increase the chances of spreading or becoming exposed to COVID. Uh, so I think that is the major reduction that you see here. Uh, if not for the pandemic, I feel we would have probably landed in that fifteen thousand range again as far as calls go. Um, and I should point out, twenty fifteen was not a, was not a terrible year. Uh, that's just the first year that we really started keeping track. Um, that's the year we switched to new world reporting system and really started charting where we spend our time.
Chief, I still think it shouldn't be minimized, that downward trend, even if you were to plateau at fifteen thousand in twenty twenty. I mean, if, if twenty-one thousand is an accurate number for twenty fifteen, you've done a good job for five years.
Thank you, sir. Now, it's, uh, thi- this has been a difficult year. Um, and, and, uh, it's hard to say what exactly the root cause for that was. I just know we've, we've had far fewer citizen contacts than we've had in, in, uh, years past. But thank you. Uh, there's a page in here for the Rhino unit. Uh, Rhino is the, and, and I didn't make this acronym. I know it doesn't line up, but it's the, uh, region of the Irish Hills Narcotics Office. And it's a collaborative effort between us, the Sheriff's Department and the State Police. Because of the transient nature of drug trafficking and offenses, uh, we recognize that, uh, you know, a problem that may not necessarily be in Adrian right now, uh, could be tomorrow. Uh, drug sales and conflicts tend to travel. So by putting in one officer, uh, we have seven that work in our area. So it's a, it's a good deal for us. What you see here are their year-end numbers. They did twenty-two search warrants. Those are the substances that were seized, weapons and over fifty thousand in, in drug proceeds. Uh, I would also add to that, that they, uh, did a hundred and twenty-two arrest counts. So generally, when they do a search warrant, there's more than one person inside, either with outstanding warrants or, uh, that can be charged in the offenses leading up to that search warrant. Pages thirty-nine through forty-one deal with citation statistics. Uh, as I said, there are very robust tools in Clemis, so you can, uh, break down the reports by offense, uh, by any demographic. Uh, you can also break it down by officer, which is one that, uh, we did in one of the focus groups over the summer. So, um, you're looking for any anomalies, any, uh, um, enforcement that's not done equally across the city or across groups. Um, and I was happy to report that, uh, that in looking at that with the private citizen group, we did not find any issues. Page fifty-four is crash data. Um, this is supposed to be the list of top ten intersections where we have accidents. Uh, there are more than ten locations here because there's a number of ties. Um, also I would point out that there are some semantics with the way that the intersections are entered. If you look at the sixth from the bottom, fifth and sixth from the bottom, that's the same intersection. So industrial and two-twenty-three, um, and industrial and two-twenty-three highway. So it splits it up. Really, that should be an eight. That should move it, uh, as a tie for third place. The same is true of North Main and Sienna. There's two locations here that should, uh, be added to a single location, which pushes it into second place. Um, I would say that Main and Sienna used to be our number one. There was a, a few years where it was our number one location for crashes. However, they redid the intersection, they put in a turn lane there and as you can see, uh, has greatly reduced the number of crashes there. So that is one positive takeaway. Um, feature in Maine, uh, I can only, I can only guess. Matt would probably have some more information on this, but just volume, uh, just the sheer volume of cars going through that intersection every day leads to that number of crashes. The, uh, photo on the right there, that is a Cadillac Escalade with its nose down in the river at Island Park. That was, uh, a drunk driving crash we had in September, a very scary scene. Page fifty-five and fifty-six is an entry for our naloxone deployment. That is when someone is suffering from an overdose. That is the nasal spray that you use to try to bring them out of it and get them the emergency care they need. As you can see, our numbers are way down in the last two years. Couple reasons for that. Uh, number one, our ambulance service is much closer. Uh, so generally they arrive at the same time as us or within five minutes. And the, uh, state guidelines are such that if medical personnel will arrive within five minutes, that we are supposed to wait and let them be the ones to deploy it. So there's no confusion. So, um, that has been the case there. Um, I would point out, these are not all overdoses. These are just the cases where we have administered the drug. Um, so there have been far fewer instances of that for us. Uh, I would also add that naloxone is provided to us at no cost through the Lenawey Community Mental Health Organization. Um, every spring, if we have unused doses that are expired, we take them in and, and trade those in and get new ones. So they provide that at no cost. The remainder of the report is analysis. Uh, we take the statistics that we have and we try to learn something. We try to, uh, look at trends, review the effectiveness of our policy and training. Um, it's a chance to evolve with the benefit of outside review. So a part of accreditation is having other agencies there to help you, uh, learn from what's going on around you and, and change to be within best practice. I put down three examples. These are the most glaring examples. We have a lot of work yet to do. Um, to be honest, I was in a real crunch to get this out to you for this meeting. And, uh, we intend to evaluate this in the weeks and months to come and hopefully build on it. Um, but these three examples, um, the property room location and labeling, everything we enter is barcoded. So it's scanned, it's put in the vault and then the status of which is stored in our computer. So when you have court, you can go and get that evidence out and take it with you. What we found in that, uh, our numbering system, we were thinking we want it to be numerical, you know, one through ten. Um, but then item number two winds up being a bicycle. Uh, item three is a counterfeit bill in a small paper envelope. Item four is a chainsaw. You know, these aren't items that you can stack numerically along a shelf. Um, so in our audit of the property room, uh, we came up with a new system for locating things. Uh, based on the size of the item, the type, uh, and the estimated amount of time of storage. So if we have something that's a life felony that we'll be keeping for twenty, thirty, forty years, that goes in a different area than something that could be resolved next week and we can dispose of. Uh, impact weapons, so we have issued extendable batons for probably twenty years, uh, excuse me, no, ten years, about ten years now. I don't think we have ever used them as a use of force option. We have never used them against a combative subject. Uh, officers far and away prefer the taser and, uh, the data is such that it supports that. Um, they were issued in part, uh, more as a tool. We did it when an officer almost cut his hand off trying to break into a window of a burning house. So we thought if we had an option like that, either on the belt or in their duty bag, they could use that and thereby avoid injury. So, um, since that time, we've deployed them, we've trained with them. We've never used them. So, uh, the analysis from this point forward is, is it even worth our time? Is it worth our money? Can we spend that better elsewhere? And I think the answer is yes. Um, and speaking with officers, many of them don't even carry them because they're not ergonomically friendly. They're, they're, uh, about the size of a ruler and they stick you in the back when you go to sit in your car. And it's, uh, it's not a very pleasant thing and it's apparently not a very useful one either. So that is one thing that we will probably do away with. Um, I've put pursuits on here, uh, because that was more of a validation. You may recall, we adopted the State Police Pursuit Policy at the beginning of the year. It's very restrictive. Um, essentially you have to have a knowledge of a very violent felony for the person in that vehicle in order to pursue it. Reason being, um, pursuits are very litigious. They often end in the very least, property damage, sometimes injury, sometimes death. So if you are to initiate a pursuit and the person has a warrant for bad checks, you know, that's not something that's worth all of that risk. So you are to terminate that pursuit. And we put that on here because the evidence supports what we had hoped all along. Uh, we had one pursuit that was terminated by the officer appropriately. And we wound up having contact with that person, uh, a couple of days down the road and was arrested, dealt with, uh, without any issues. So it worked as designed. Um, you know, this person had taken off at a hundred miles an hour down the road through busy streets. Um, very serious potential for causing accident or injury, uh, and it was right to, to terminate that pursuit. Ordinarily, we don't talk about internal complaints, but, uh, this, this, uh, report is also an exercise in full transparency. So we have a, uh, there's no names incorporated into this portion, but page fifty-eight through sixty gives an overview of the citizen complaints we took in twenty twenty. Um, we handled just under thirteen thousand calls for service, which amounted to fourteen complaints that were initiated by citizens. Uh, there were another eight internal complaints initiated from within the department, either by supervisors or, uh, other staff uh, for a total of twenty-two complaints for the year. Um, there's, there are outcome statistics based in that report. Uh, what I wanted to say in here is that, uh, the importance of body worn cameras can't be overstated. I mean, they resolved, uh, far and away the majority of these. Um, and it is, uh, it is almost such that the public expects us to have video of everything. And if, you know, through some, uh, issue we don't, if there's a mechanical, electrical failure or something, the video's not available. Um, it is, it's looked at as almost an admission of, of guilt. So it is definitely something that we don't want to lose going forward and hope to improve on, uh, as we discussed in the capital budget process. Use of force reports comprise the rest. Page seventy-seven through one oh six, uh, they are broken down, um, by race, age, gender. Uh, any, any statistic you want, we can run. If you're looking for, you know, how many, uh, how many handcuffing incidents did you have on Wednesday evening? Uh, I, I mean, you name it and we can sort it by that. Uh, the same is true for the arrest data at the bottom, ninety-four through ninety-six. So when comparing the two, we wanted to make sure that there were no anomalies. Um, in a perfect world, your arrest data based on different demographics should match your use of force. You don't ever want to see that, that use of force is being applied to one group over another and ours is, is, uh, almost identical. So that's, that is a great thing to find. Uh, page eighty-seven includes officer injuries from those uses of force. Uh, we were, we were very fortunate. I think we only had four that year, uh, and nothing major. Uh, this, this is extremely oversimplified and I do apologize for that, but this is that supplement that I was talking about, those pie charts. Um, you know, I get asked very frequently, what's the difference between last year and this year? You know, I get asked very frequently, what's the difference between last year and this year? So I just picked six topics or, or excuse me, six file classes. This is a real, forgive the expression, it's, it's a very concise look at the difference. So we had no homicides in 2019 and we had two in 2020. So that's too, too many. The orange bar there is, it's abduction slash kidnapping. And that's deceiving because those are mainly domestic partner relationships. Wouldn't let me out of the kitchen, wouldn't let me out of the car, that type of thing. Change in that, that doubled from 19 to 20, from five incidents to 10. The yellow bar, criminal sexual conduct, one, that is the worst kind of forcible rape. We saw an increase there from 12 to 16. The, I don't know if you call that a baby blue color, the robbery column, an increase of 40% from 12 to 17. And this is the one that, that stumped me the most. Obviously, you're all familiar with the shooting complaints we've had recently, the assaults that we've had. FAS felonious assault, when you assault someone with a weapon. I expected to see a huge increase here. It actually went down by two. I don't have an explanation for that. It's been a while since I was in statistics class, but I think the answer lies within the fact that as a percentage of the whole, with all of the other complaints going down, this should be considered an increase. It, it dropped two, but you know, with everything else around it falling, this should have fall, it fell the same amount, but did not. The last one on here doesn't really belong. This is a property crime, but because of the increase, I, I put it on. This is motor vehicle theft, the unlawful driving away of an automobile. And we went from 17 complaints to 37, an increase of 117%. And I don't have an explanation for that. The only thing I can add is that most of these were recovered. They were almost means to an end type offense. You know, I'm going to jump in so and so's car and drive it to where I need to go and then leave it and then the police find it later. This isn't the, the gone in 60 seconds, steal a nice car and take it to the chop shop. This, this is a means of getting around. So that's what we have had there. That is all I prepared as far as a summary. This is a lot to digest. It's something that we will continue to work on. Can I, can I answer any questions? Is there anything I can speak to here? Apologize for the technical difficulties. That's my first screen share. Usually Michelle does it all.
Hey Chief, this is Gordon. Can we get a copy of the PowerPoint presentation?
Absolutely.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir.
Are there any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, how do we feel about punting on the next discussion to allow more time for it and I would allow some time for public comment.
I'm good with that.
Fine.
Can we introduce it for, for, so we all kind of think about it for the next two weeks?
Sure. As you all know, the current state of our ordinances is that we allow up to 10, I'll call them dispensaries, they could sell either medical or recreational marijuana in the commercial districts, which are the B1 and B2 districts of the city. We are unlimited citywide in that there is no limitation on the number of dispensaries. It could be located in industrial, although those do have to be attached to a grow facility. And so the question is, are we comfortable with that number going forward?
In addition to the concept of having a setback from libraries?
Yes, correct. Okay, so we'll have that on the next pre-meeting agenda then. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for public comment time.
All right. Thank you, Greg. It is now time for public comment. If anyone has any public comment, please state your name and address before giving your comment so that we know who's speaking. Thank you.
I have a question. This is Ashley Cavassos Frank at 141 and a half South Main Street. With the, the chief's report, I guess I just had a question in regards to HRC. Like if we had specific questions about incidents, are we able to, through the HRC, like asked to review specific things, like specific use of force or something like that?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Ashley. I, I hope to have this up on the website. As I was reading through in preparation, I found some more typos. I want to get those fixed and then we will get it posted. But definitely, no, we, we hope to learn from everything on here and certainly appreciate any, any criticism or any reflection.
I was giving it a minute just to make sure nobody else was coming on, but hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support Watson.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Our regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM sharp. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Mayor, she do know your mic's on?
Yes, she was saying hi to you guys.
Is that like a dress she has on?
It's a Burberry dress from Charlotte.
Oh, my goodness.
She flipped her ears back to go with the dress.
Oh, gosh. Oh, my. All right, it is seven o'clock and I'm going to ask our city administrator, Greg Elliott, to give our now infamous Zoom speech. Thank you.
I choose to think of it as famous. Good evening, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants, other than the commissioners and staff members mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. Those times, participants can unmute themselves and will have an opportunity to address the commission. The three-minute rule will be in effect. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure is the same as an in-person meeting and we will work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Our agenda and agenda packet can be found at the city's website, www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating tonight. Mayor Heath, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I now call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting of February 1st, 2021. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Robin, roll call, please. Present.
Mr. Hope.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the January 19th, 2021 regular meeting?
Move to approve the minutes, Roberts.
Support Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move, pay the vouchers as presented. Help.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hope with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Is that what you have, Robin? I just want to make sure.
I got Watson and Gauss. Who wants it?
Give it to both of them. A second from Commissioner Gauss and a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yeah.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
At this time, we are going to do a proclamation. We are going to be honoring a couple of teams tonight, but we're going to do it in one proclamation. They will be each receiving their own proclamation though. So I know we do have tonight, I already saw them on the call, we have Nathan Sharp from Lenaway Christian. He's the men's soccer coach. We have Bill Wilhams, the Lenaway Christian football coach, and Craig Anderson, the Lenaway Christian athletic director. And I, I'm sure there's And I'm sure there's students and parents on here as well, but I just wanted to acknowledge the three of them. This proclamation is going to be honoring both the football team and the men's soccer team as they both won state championships. This past fall, football technically was past fall, but it just happened recently. So, but, so I will be delivering proclamations to Lenaway Christian for both the men's soccer team and for the football team. But for the sake of time tonight, we're reading them together. So at this time, I'm now going to read the proclamation. Whereas the past year has been a challenge for us all and especially for our youth. And whereas despite the difficulties that they had to overcome, the Lenaway Christian football team and Lenaway Christian boys soccer team both brought home state titles this season. Whereas the Lenaway Christian Cougars football team secured a perfect 11-0 season with its first ever state championship, beating Sutton's Bay 47 to nothing in the eight-man Division One state title game. And whereas the Lenaway Christian boys soccer team brought home Lenaway Christian and Lenaway County's first ever state title in boys soccer, beating Granville 2 to 1, scoring the winning goal in the last 22 seconds of the game. And whereas both teams displayed the type of teamwork and commitment to their sport that athletes should aspire to. And whereas a state championship in any year is an outstanding accomplishment. And in a year with shutdowns, delays, stops and starts, it is a victory the LCS athletic teams, school and community should be beyond proud of. Now therefore, I Angela Sorkheath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby congratulate, congratulate, sorry, the Lenaway Christian School Cougars football team and boys soccer team on their great accomplishments. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to send a special congratulations to my old football coach. I see he's on there right now. Coach Wilhams, he was my defensive coordinator when I was in high school many, many moons ago. And I'm just so proud of what he's done with that, that program and building it from the ground up. Could be more proud of him and just want to say congratulations, Coach.
Thank you for joining us tonight and congratulations. And I will be bringing those proclamations to your school shortly. Where I'm working that out with your athletic director. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to our regular agenda. Under special orders, Special Order Dash One is a public hearing to hear and consider public comments regarding proposed amendments to the following provisions of the City of Adrian zoning ordinance. A, add a new subsection 4.38.1 Keeping of Chickens by City Commission requests thereto. B, amend section 4.34 accessory buildings thereto. C, add a new section 4.34.1 for accessory uses thereto. I'm going to open this up for the public hearing in a second, but before I begin, I am going to ask City Administrator Greg Elliott to once again speak to these. He had asked to go ahead and speak to this of what these actually mean. And also I want to reiterate, once we start the public hearing, you are allowed to speak once and there will be a three-minute time limit on each speaker. But before we begin, Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. So 4.38.1 Keeping of Chickens would amend the provision of the zoning ordinance that currently prohibits the keeping of any kind of fowl, farm animals in general and fowls, as the ordinance puts it in particular, to allow for the keeping of up to four hens in the rear yard of a residential property of at least 10,000 square feet in area that is owner occupied, subject to certain requirements related to the housing of those birds. Section 4.34 accessory buildings is amended to allow for larger accessory buildings, so sheds and the like. By right, currently any such structure that would be over 100 square feet in area would have to go to the zoning Board of Appeals. The draft ordinance creates a sort of a proportional structure for allowing those in proportion to the size of the backyard. And then 4.34.1 accessory uses is just a reorganization that took those out of the section on accessory buildings and made their own section because they are not buildings.
Thank you, Greg. So at this time, I call the public hearing to order.
I'll speak. Eric Kennedy, 1338 West Mall Me. Thank you for the time. Commissioners, I appreciate your willingness to listen to all the issues at hand and how this is a step back for the city of Adrian. You're going in the right direction. Please don't give up on it and do what the majority would like. Thanks.
We have a gentleman speaking under Patricia's iPad who's muted.
Mr. Cooper. You're muted.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Can you hear now?
Yes. My wife, she mutes me on more than one occasion. I would be against an ordinance that allows poultry to be kept under any circumstances. We have enough problems with coronavirus. Don't need additional problems. There's health conditions that poultry can spread, especially through the fecal matter, there's avian flu, there's other problems. Do not want to see residents keeping poultry. Took a straw poll and in historic district at least, it was 19 to 1 against poultry.
Hello?
Yes.
Brandon Morley, I'm at 380.
Go ahead, Brandon. And Mr. Cooper, can you mute again? Thank you.
Yes.
Mute again, wipe out those. Go ahead, Mr. Morley.
Some of you might know I am one of the ones that started the Facebook group for the chickens. Along with Chris Williams and Robert Binky. I know we've had an overwhelming amount of support for the chickens. The yeses. Can you hear me? Can you?
You're cutting in and out a lot.
Maybe try turning your camera off.
My wifi must be really, my girls are on their tablets, so.
Turn your camera off, it works, it helps.
Does that help at all?
Yes, it's much better.
I say, can you hear me now? All right, well, I'm the founder of the chicken page that we started a while back last year along with Chris Williams and Robert Binky. I know we had an overwhelming amount of support in favor of having chickens. The yeses have actually outweighed the no's by far. I've gone through all the different polls, all the different, like the Telegram's posted, W L N's posted. I know Ellen Help, Alan Help did on his commissioner page. We've had quite a bit of comments and a lot of likes. And I know we've had a lot of people email in favor of that. So obviously I am in favor of the chickens.
Hearing no more comment?
Mayor, Mayor. I was waiting for you to call the next person.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My name's Bob Binky. I live at 256 Ironwood Drive. Wanted to, again, thank the commission for this extended process when it comes to chickens. It's been seven months now since we first started this conversation. And the evolution of this ordinance has, you know, gone from just this open idea about chickens to something that's much more defined, much more restrictive. I think it provides enough protections for those that are opposed to chickens and enough opportunity that those are in favor of chickens. We've gone down from, you know, the first thought of six birds down to four. Obviously chickens only, no roosters. We've eliminated the option of having that coop close to a neighbor's house. So there's now a minimum foot requirement between the coop and the neighbor's house. There's a minimum, or excuse me, a maximum size requirement for the coop and maximum height requirement. This is only for owner occupied buildings. This is another area that's been added on as a restriction and a protection. This also requires approval from the zoning administrator. That's something that is unique only to Adrian. So that plans need to be submitted to the zoning administrator for approval before, before moving forward. So that's a good check and balance to make sure that there's an appropriate coop in place and that it's protecting the birds and protecting individuals from those birds getting out or from animals getting in. The other important piece here that we're talking about definitely is sustainability. Because as we talk about mega farms and the impact that they have on carbon emissions and pollution, this is a great opportunity for us to reduce the amount of eggs that are being trucked in that we get to provide and source ourselves locally. We get to recycle our own food to help through feeding our chickens and provide food that's safe for us through that, through that process. I want to thank Commissioner Castleberry. She spoke last time where she reached out to Albin and Marshall outside of the work that I did, but, you know, was able to get firsthand knowledge from the municipalities there that chickens are not, are not an issue and that in reaching out to realtors, I know she mentioned that last time. I also reached out to some local realtors here and that chickens do not play a negative impact when it comes to housing prices. I want to thank Brandon for his work. You know, the most recent poll, if you want to talk about social media, that was. Thank you. 102 likes and only two frowny faces.
Your China's up. Sorry, thank you. Sorry, Robin, we can't see it. We were trying to see it when you did that. I couldn't see it.
Just reading.
Okay.
Mayor WC has their hand up.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I Will Camp, 256 Ironwood Drive. I just wanted to speak in favor of chickens. I think the ordinance is well drafted and quite restricted to prevent any sort of the bad outcomes that people talk about and delay any fears that we might have. So I hope you will vote in favor of chickens. Thank you.
Erica Boggs is raising her hand. I'm not sure if she wants to speak or.
Oh, yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I was just waiting for the permission. My name's Erica Boggs. I'm from 738 St. Joseph Street. I am also for the chickens. I grew up on a small farm, so I have grown up with them. It is something that I miss and enjoy. But I currently live in an apartment and we are looking for a house. But that is one of the things that I've noticed with some of the properties we've gone to look at. But I think we're probably grandfathered in a while ago that had chicken coops and had a few small, you know, small chick, sorry, chickens. I agree with a lot of the ordinances. They're wanting to put in restricting how many, no roosters. I think a lot of that follows a lot of what would make things good for our neighbors, but still have our own way to like produce for ourselves. I like gardening. I like owning, being able to own chickens and at least have the opportunity for a small coop to feed myself and my family with fresh eggs. So I am for the chickens.
I am seeing no more hands up. I just went through it twice to make sure and I'm not hearing any more comment. So at this time, I call the public hearing closed and we will move on to ordinance, ordinances. Ordinance 21 dash 001 is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 4 of the Adrian Zoning Ordinance to add section 4.38.1 Keeping of Chickens. May I get a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance. Support, Roberts.
At this time, are there any public comments? Hearing no public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, my man?
Go ahead.
I actually prepared comments tonight, which I usually don't do, it kind of go off the cusp a lot, but I want to be crisp and clear in my, my message I want to send individually. So during our, our January 18th commission pre-meeting, I asked citizens to reach out to me if they had issues or concerns with proposed ordinance amendment in front of us tonight. In the beginning of this process, backyard chickens was not something I had a lot of passion for. Some of the citizens that are in favor of the ordinance amendment did a lot of legwork, research in regards to allowing chickens within city limits and how it would impact the city and neighbors. I believe the ordinance is strong and also, and also thought out to help calm some of the concerns the citizens have, citizens have. With that being said, my experience in dealing with somewhat contentious issues is that once we get to the end of the road and ready to vote, the opposition comes out and starts being vocal. This amended ordinance is no different. The past two weeks, my email and voicemail have flooded with concerned citizens speaking in oppositions and all were very passionate in doing so. As commissioners, it's our job to listen to both sides when an issue's on the table, especially if there are two sides that are both very passionate. The mayor, Commissioner Strayer and myself have been a part of a subcommittee regarding blank code enforcement since October. This group is compiled of the three elected officials I mentioned, along with Administrator Elliott, Attorney Henigan, our two code enforcement officers. along with Administrator Elliott, Attorney Henigan, our two code enforcement officers, and seven community leaders. City staff with elected city, city staff along with elected leaders will be presenting to our colleagues during our February 15th pre-meeting. As a collective group, we will talk about our composite plan and how as a city, we will work alongside with landlords, building owners, tenants to plan to attack aggressively blight in our community. Why does this matter with the discussion at hand? Because I know our city staff will be spending time with permits, enforcements, and complaints regarding backyard chickens. I ask myself, do I want to take time away from our city staff when they are tackling blight amongst other things to deal with chickens? I feel for me, the time is not right to add another layer of enforcement to have, to manage and hold property owners accountable. Furthermore, I go back to my original statement last meeting. Do I believe if this ordinance was on the ballot, would it pass? I truly believe in my heart that it would not pass and not pass by a fairly large margin. With that being said, we have a city election in November. If this amended ordinance doesn't pass, and I, just like the public in attendance tonight, have no idea. I would encourage the citizens to support this amended ordinance to organize and get the number of certified signatures needed to be placed in a ballot. These decisions are tough, and I've been a commissioner long enough to understand I won't make everybody happy tonight. But I have to do what, I have to make the best decision on what I feel the majority of the citizens want in their communities.
Mayor, if I may. I've received more communication on this matter than anything else I have during my three and a half years of service on the commission. This was a surprise to me. This is also an issue that has taken a long time to come to this vote. I first met with city staff on September 29th, 2020 to talk about the process and the timeline of today's vote. I've learned a lot about chickens, the benefits, the drawbacks of backyard poultry. I've also been reminded time and time again about the passion of our city residents. As a commissioner, I am charged with being an elected voice of a population. I take this role very seriously. The feedback from city residents is the foundation of how I formulate my votes. Additionally, I take into consideration the possible long-term impact of a decision I make. And at times, that speaks to me louder than the voices of the city residents when I only receive a little input from the community. When receiving little input from the community, I consider what I want to be, what I want Adrian to be, the makeup of its residents, the eye appeal of the area, and the economic engines that are advancing us along. So taking into the mind that the community was very vocal on this matter, and especially vocal in the last two weeks, I am not in favor and cannot firmly substantiate how backyard chickens would give the city a material lift in any of these areas.
Sorry, Commissioner Watson, I didn't realize I was on mute when I told you go ahead. So, thanks.
I read your lips.
Mayor, I'll have a prepared statement.
Commissioner Strayer, go ahead.
I want to start out by saying I appreciate the time and effort the planning commission put in on the chicken issue. I think they wrote a pretty good ordinance. I do question Section 3, Paragraph H, that states when birds are outside of their pen, "A person shall be present to supervise the birds." I'm pretty sure that part of the ordinance will be violated sooner rather than later. I'm not an expert on chickens, but I've done some reading. They need to have some out-of-pan time, time to run around the yard. It would be cruel to keep them in the pen all the time. I'm also not an expert on human behavior, but I have lived 66 years and made some observations. In the beginning, when one starts their chicken project, there will be enthusiasm to be in the backyard with the birds. But when the weather isn't the best, it might just be easier to let them out and go back inside, go back inside to check on them from time to time. Or when one gets busy with your real job or other obligations, it might just be easier to let them out and watch them from afar, checking in from time to time. Section 3, Paragraph K, makes reference to a secure housing to prevent rats, mice, and other rodents. This is good, but everyone loves chickens, including owls, hawks, raccoons, fox, coyote, weasels, skunks, possum, and even snakes. These wild animals will find chickens because it's bred into them. Now, a chicken owner may not be concerned about attracting other wild animals, but their neighbors who own a small cat might be. Speaking of wild animals, we just passed an ordinance prohibiting the feeding of wild animals. I feel chickens is a contradiction of the wild animal ordinance because I believe they will attract wild animals. But the ordinance isn't my main point. While I think hobbies are good, your return on investments to get into chickens is terrible when you compare it to just buying eggs. A chicken coop will cost a couple hundred dollars or more. Poultry, facing $20. Chicken food, 50-pound bags, $15. Water tray, water heaters, $16. Heat lamp, $14. So you can easily wind up, you can easily be at $500 just to get started, not including maintaining to keep the project going. My point being this is a hobby, this is a hobby for a very small group of people. This is not a means to feed one's family. One Way County is an agricultural community, but Adrian is a city. We don't have farms in the city. Cities have ordinances that townships don't have. It's those ordinances that separate city life from country life. Neither lifestyle is better than the other one, but one needs to figure out what is best for you. While I'm sure raising chickens could be a fun hobby, it's a hobby that needs to take place in a rural setting where you have fewer ordinances. As commissioners, you know the number one topic the public brings to our attention is blight. When chickens are not maintained correctly, they too will become blight. I recently read in a publication called Florida Key Ventures, where Key West Florida is now trying to control gypsy chickens. Let me read from that article. "Historically, there were always chickens on the island. Back in the day, locals kept them in their backyards with a purpose to produce eggs and become dinner one day. Over the years, some of the birds managed to escape and become official Key West gypsy chickens." Now, let me read from an article dated January 22nd of this year. "In the Miami Herald, Key West leaders are moving to crack down on people feeding the free-ranging chickens on the island. A new ordinance would ban freely feeding them citing health and safety concerns and property damage." Now, in all fairness, roosters are part of the equation in this case. Now, some of you may be thinking I'm not comparing apples to apples because we're talking about an ordinance in Adrian where you're keeping four chickens in a pen as opposed to a completely different issue in Florida that has gotten out of hand. But it started with backyard chickens. "We've been putting forth a lot of effort to put together a new plan to fight blight in the city, and I feel chickens will take us in the wrong direction. I want our code enforcement staff dealing with blight not checking up on chickens." Myself and some have stated, if this issue were on the ballot, I'm not sure it would fail, or I'm sure that it would fail. That alone is a reason enough for me to vote no. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a moment.
Commissioner Castleberry, go ahead.
I didn't prepare a statement to read. However, I have never thought, when I was appointed in October, that I would spend so much time studying chickens because of so much controversy about this issue. I too was flooded, my inbox was flooded with emails after the last meeting, but I feel that half of those emails were for and half of those emails were against. And so in doing my due diligence to see what the future would look like or what I believe the future to look like for the city of Adrian, I called the city of Albion, which is structured much like the city of Adrian. And I called the city of Marshall as well. I talked to a commissioner in Marshall. I talked to the zoning ordinance officers in both areas. I called realtors in both areas, and no one had a negative comment about chickens in their communities. I also have a sister struggling with Lyme disease. I know that chickens eat ticks, and she got that from a neighbor's dog. So considering that you can have four chickens and all of the requirements and the restrictions in this, I don't believe chickens will be an issue for our community. I have a neighbor with three dogs that bark consistently all day long. And I afford them the right to have those dogs. Little dogs, small cats, things like that, animals out there are just as welcome for bigger animals to come get them, such as hawks, et cetera. So I don't see a difference in small dogs or cats and chickens being something that could be attacked by another animal. I think that it's time for us to step out of the box a little bit in our community. The Dominican sisters have done a great job at promoting sustainability and teaching our children what sustainability looks like. We are recycling now. We're planting gardens more than ever in our community. The chicken coop can be fertilizer for your garden, getting the eggs, teaching children what that looks like. Kids don't see what farming looks like like we used to when I had, my grandparents had farms. I don't see this as a negative. I see this as a positive for our city. I see it moving in a more positive direction.
Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Gauss, go ahead.
If I can make a comment, and like Commissioner Castleberry, I did not prepare any remarks. I would like to say that over the last couple of weeks, there have been a number of emails, phone calls, I've heard it all. I also was on the planning commission meeting where we discussed this. The pro-chicken group is very passionate, and I certainly understand that. But I did a little research on the people who were making comments, a number of them from places outside of the city of Adrian. People in Clinton, Tecumseh, we had just a number of people. People from the township, and I love the township, but I got to be honest with you. They don't vote in the city. They don't, we don't, they would not participate in a ballot measure. And so I'm not, you know, I just want to hear from the people in the city of Adrian. To the point of sustainability, people say they need these to change, you know, to feed their families. Four eggs a day aren't going to feed a whole lot of families. It's just, it's not going to happen. So I questioned the whole sustainability thing. But the one thing that no one has talked about, at least not the proponents, I've talked about it, but not the proponents, is the disease that the chickens carry, the salmonella. I've got CDC statistics in front of me. In 2019, 1,134 individuals were infected with salmonella in 50 states. 740 of those were hospitalized. There were two deaths. Likewise, in 2020, or 2020, I'm sorry, that is 2020. 1,722 people were infected. 33% of them were hospitalized, 24% were children under the age of five. And there was a death reported in the state of Oklahoma. So I, you know, I just cannot in good conscience, again, believing what Commissioner Health said and what Commissioner Watson said and what Commissioner Strayer said. If put to a vote of the people on a ballot, I do not believe that it would pass. And consequently, I can't in good conscience vote against what I believe is the public's will. Thank you.
Mayor Heath. Commissioner Roberts, go ahead.
Thank you. So I've listened to a lot of city residents and some non-city residents and all of the commissioners tonight and for the last few months. And I agree, we spent way too much time on this ordinance. And so tonight, hopefully, we're going to put it to rest, one way or the other. A couple of comments that I have is that I do agree. I think it's going to be just a few residents. First year might be a fad, there might be 25 or so. The next year, they're going to see how much time and effort raising chickens really is. And so cut the next year or two and a half down to 12. So the amount of time spent by our city staff is going to probably decrease year after year. About 50/50 on the comments to me and yes and no on chickens. Would I see that it passes on a ballot? I don't know. And I'm not sure that that's always the best indicator of what we as a commission should do. Sometimes we have to think for, not just for the majority of this residents in the city, but what is best for the city and what might be best for some of the residents of the city. So I do think that that is, you know, something I've taken into account that not all of my votes have been what I think the majority of the city residents would have done if it was put to a ballot. And we were elected to take a look at the small people in the city, also with the majority, and do what's best, what we think is best. I've stated this many times. Growing up on a dairy farm, we have chickens. We still have chickens at my parents' house. My brothers have chickens. My nieces have chickens. There hasn't been one instance in all the years of any disease or salmonella. I do think that that is the case, probably coming from mega farms. I don't know that that would come from any private, individually owned chickens. At least I've never heard of any. And literally, I have, I have so many chickens in my background in my cousins and aunts and uncles. It's just never happened that I've been aware of. We live in a society, and our society, the city of Adrian, is based on trust. And I'm going to trust our residents to be responsible chicken owners and city residents. So because of that, I'm going to vote yes.
I also have prepared a statement, and I promise I will make it short. It is a repeat of some of the things that have already been said. This was a very tough decision, and I believe that seven people should not be making this decision. I firmly believe it should be on a ballot and voted on by the people of our city. But the commission does not have the power to initiate a zoning ordinance amendment going to a ballot. Being on the city commission means making tough choices. They have to be made, and we cannot make everyone happy. And our decisions will not be favorable to all. Many have said, stop making this an enforcement issue. And you're right, it's not an enforcement issue. It's the issue of spending taxpayer money on all the complaints that will come in and all the follow-up that will have to occur. And that will be many hours and time spent by city employees checking on chicken coops if this were to pass. I would love to think that everyone would read the ordinance in its entirety and follow all the guidelines if it were to pass. But the truth is, I attend every planning commission meeting and every zoning board appeals meeting, and I have seen time and time again that many do not know, even one of the ordinances tonight that we're looking at is accessory buildings. And that a lot of those that were coming to those zoning board of appeals said, oh, I started to build a pad for my accessory building and didn't even realize that there was all these specifications, and I wasn't going to be following them, so I had to stop. And now I'm here at the zoning board of appeals. That's just one example of what occurs time and time again. And my concern is that will tenants actually know that they cannot keep chickens? Will people really read in entirety what those coop requirements are and what that square footage of that yard is? I would love to trust and think that everyone would read that, but I'm not, I am going to be very truthful here. My husband and I were getting ready to purchase a shed when I was at a zoning board of appeals meeting and realized the shed we were looking at was not going to be in specifications. I did not even realize that as the mayor that our shed we were looking at. So we stopped and we've. Just waited to see what happens with, with everything proceeding forward and we're not looking at that shed anymore because it's just too large. That is, that is the reality. Are people going to look at this entire ordinance? And I cannot think that planning commission enough, those meetings were rough. They were, they spent hours and a lot of time and just tireless energy pouring into making this. As specific and perfected to what would really be aesthetically pleasing and what would be safe and what would be great for our city. But will it be followed? That is the question that, that I have to ask. And will we be spending taxpayer money looking into every complaint instead of using our city resources wisely and concentrating on existing issues that we have? That we can improve upon like blight. Instead of adding more hours and money into an already full plate. I feel it is just not the right time for our city to go forward with chickens. Thank you. At this time, having heard public comment and commissioner comments. We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Mr. Watson.
No.
Mr. Strayer.
No.
Mr. Gauss.
No.
Mr. Castleberry.
You're muted.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
No.
Mr. Help.
No.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Ordinance fails by a five no to yes vote.
Moving on to ordinance twenty-one dash zero zero two. It is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Article Four, Section four point three four. Accessory buildings and to add Section four point three four point one accessory uses to the Adrian zoning ordinance. May I get a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve the ordinance. Support.
Are there any public comments? I'm allowing for a little more time because we were told there were a few trying to still get in a little bit ago. Hearing no public comments, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call please.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Ordinance approved by unanimous vote.
Ordinance twenty-one dash zero zero three is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance. To amend Articles Three, Section three point one of the City of Adrian zoning development regulations. And the zoning map to which reference is made therein, to the extent of deleting twelve twenty-two East Mommy, East Mommy Street. From the I-1 light industrial district and including the same in the planned unit development district. May I get a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve the ordinance, Strayer.
Second, Castleberry.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. I'm speaking to you as a member of the planning commission and as a private citizen. I know that Jim Bunshu is on our call tonight. Hats off to him for being creative. Taking a piece of property and reutilizing it into city staff. We're working with him. This is a great. Use of this property. It's a wonderful solution. It's a perfect example. Of staff. And citizens. And our commission, planning commission, I think, to think out of the box. Something I may say that you don't always do, but anyway, I want to commend Jim for this and I want to thank staff for all their work. This is really, I think, very much, you should support this.
Mayor Brian Elliott has his hand raised.
Go, go ahead, Brian Elliott.
Well, I would just like to also add support. I think using planned unit development and adding more apartments, more housing is something that. Adrian and a lot of the cities need to think of and incorporate into their cities. The chance to have more housing, I'm not sure whether it's going to be affordable housing. However it works, more residencies are needed and looking at them with planned unit developments are definitely a way to do that. I applaud the chance of looking at ordinances, rethinking them and getting them back in here. Just again, thanks for having more housing and considering this. As a side note, if you can build it accessibly and make it everything accessible, that would be a bonus so that going forward. It would always be accessible and people would always be able to use it long term. That would be great as well. Otherwise, thanks again for consideration.
I'm not seeing any more hands up or hearing any more comments. So are there any commissioner comments?
I have one, one comment. If this passes, I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood. It'll also make for a great first impression when people are coming from the Blissville, Palmyra area. And I know that Jim will, will handle this really, really well. It's going to be a great project.
I would also like to add, I was at the initial planning commission meeting when this was. First presented as, as a thought, it hadn't progressed that far yet and I was so excited to. Hear the innovative thinking and it was so far outside the box and how well the planning commission and city staff and everyone worked together on this. And I just think it's great when we can repurpose these buildings and that is exactly what is happening here in this situation if it does pass. I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call please.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero zero nine is from administration. It is a resolution to approve a planned unit development for twelve twenty-two East Mommy Street. May I get a motion to approve, to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call please.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero ten is from transportation. It is a resolution to approve the agreement between the city of Adrian and the Lenawee Transportation Corporation and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution, Roberts.
Or Watson.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero eleven is from transportation. It is a resolution to renew the operations contract between the city of Adrian. And NOLA's Transportation Incorporated for one year and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Help.
Support.
Robin, are you giving that to both Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Strayer?
Yeah, they both kind of said it at the same time.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call please.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero twelve is from FIRE. It is a resolution to approve the application for a regional grant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Roberts.
Castleberry.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call please.
Mr. Robert.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero thirteen is from the Assessor. It is a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-one poverty worksheet exemption application. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call please.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero fourteen is from finance. It is a resolution to approve the second quarter fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty-one budget amendments. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Roberts.
Support, Help.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call please. Can you say that one more time, Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero fifteen is from finance. It is a resolution to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two till twenty twenty-seven capital improvement program. And fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two capital budget. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Help. Support, Watson.
Robin, I'm giving it to both Watson and Castleberry, correct? Okay. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call please.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash zero sixteen is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four Lenawee County Election Coordinating Committee Agreement. And authorize the city clerk to execute the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution, Roberts.
Support, Help.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call please.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Help.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for a public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address.
Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive.
Go ahead, Mr. Taylor. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't help but return to the issue of chickens for just a moment. One of you referred to chickens. Anybody having chickens in a city would be a hobby. My recollection is that most people have a hobby, take pretty good care of their hobby. I don't believe that code enforcement should be the issue that you decide on this. I think it's wrong. Some of my planning commissioners agreed with me on this. If we don't have good code enforcement, let's address that issue. Let's not address what we think is the root cause of it, okay? I mean, we have feral cats running all over town. We have dogs going around on leashes, not on leashes, pooping all over everybody's property. Do you all get upset about that? You're going to have chickens in somebody's backyard that are going to be restrained. I'm not sure I understand where you're coming from. I would like to see you though, you know, if it goes to a vote, you know, if it gets approved, then you might have a real issue on your hands because I don't know there's going to be any controls. So, yeah, as it may, I'm not going to have any chickens in my backyard. But I'm not going to, but I'm not, I'm not a nimby either saying, not in my backyard. So whatever, I guess I am maybe in that sense. But I think your reasoning with regards to code enforcement is the wrong way to approach this. Okay, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, I do not see any hands up. And I'm not, and I'm not hearing any public comment. So we will move on. Are there any commissioner comments? Hearing no commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Support, Watson.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.